Welcome to the 2014 inauguration ceremony for Phoenix City Council. Members being sworn in for a second term are Jim Waring from District 2, Sal DeCecio from District 6. They will take their oath of office along with newly elected council members Laura Pastor from District 4 and Kate Gallego from District 8. This ceremony is being held live at the Orpheum Theater in downtown Phoenix.
Well, good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome to the historic Orpheum Theater in downtown Phoenix. I'm Phoenix Mayor Greg Stanton. Thank you for joining us today on this very special occasion, our 2014 inauguration ceremony for city council members Jim Waring, Laura Pastor, Sal DeCecio, and Kate Gallego. Let's give another, please. That was beautiful music to start out our morning. Let's give another big round of applause to Mariachi Pasion for getting us started this Thank you to our friends, Arlinda Torres and Alak for making that beautiful music happen this morning. And I'd like to acknowledge and welcome current members of the city council here today. Councilwoman Thelda Williams. Councilman Bill Gates. Councilman Danny Valenzuela. Councilman Michael Nowakowski. Our acting city manager, Ed Zirker. We have so many professional, outstanding city staff people here today, but I also want to recognize Police Chief Daniel Garcia. I know I speak on behalf of all of the city council and everyone in Phoenix in saying we are thinking of your officer who was fighting for his life here today. We appreciate our Phoenix police officers and what they do for our safety. And we are so honored and blessed that other public servants have taken the time out of their busy schedules to be with here today in Phoenix for our ceremony of inaugurating our current and new council members. I want to acknowledge a few of those folks that are here with us today. First, representing the city of Phoenix in Washington DC, our friend Congressman Ed Pastor. Congressman Pastor, thank you for being here. His wife, Verma Pastor, who serves us on the Airport Board as well as the Tourism and Sports Authority. Verma, thank you for being here. Our Secretary of State is with us today, Ken Bennett. Ken, thank you for being with us today. Our State Treasurer, Doug Ducey, is here. Doug, thank you for taking the time to be here. Arizona Corporation Commissioner Susan Bittersmith. Susan, thank you for taking the time to be here. We have representatives that do a great job representing our city in the state legislature. State Senator Steve Gallardo. Senator, thank you for being here. Our friend Senator Anna Tovar. Anna, thank you for being here. State Representative Lydia Hernandez. Lydia, thank you for taking the time. Our friend Representative Catherine Miranda. Catherine? Catherine Miranda, thank you. State Representative Jonathan Larkin. State Representative Tom Faris. Tom, thanks for taking the time to be here. We have elected officials who formerly served as mayor and as members of the city council. I would like to acknowledge them as well. Our former mayor, Paul Johnson, is here. Mayor Johnson, thank you for taking the time to be here. Former council member Doug Linger. Councilman Linger, thanks for taking the time. Councilman Claude Maddox. Good to see you, friend. Former city councilman Craig Trippken. Councilman Trippken, thanks for being here. Councilmember Brian Jeffries. Former councilman Brian Jeffries, thanks for being here, Brian. And a Mesa firefighter. And we have a representative from the city of Mesa, a city councilman who took the time to be with us. We appreciate our regional partnerships. Mesa City Councilmember Scott Summers, also a Phoenix firefighter. Scott, thank you for taking the time to be here. And of course, the most important dignitary in the Stanton household, my wife Nicole Stanton is here as well. Thank you, Nicole, for being here. We have just finished a very successful year here at City Hall, and time and time again, we show that in this age of partisan gridlock in Washington, in cities, in Phoenix and cities around the country, when we put aside partisanship and work together, we get things done. We can create positive and meaningful change. And now, after voters in four districts spoke again this year, we have an opportunity to build on that success. Two members of our city council earned another term of service, and I am particularly excited that today we welcome to the city council two new members. In Kate Gallego and in Laura Pastor, we have two accomplished women who I know will serve as powerful voices for the people they represent and help lead the way to move our city forward. I'm so excited to have them join our city council that I don't think we need to delay things any longer. Let's get down to the business of why we are here today. Without further ado, I would like to now officially call this meeting of the Phoenix City Council to order. City Clerk Chris Meyer, is there a quorum of the council present?
Yes, Mayor. A quorum of the city council is present.
So now we'll get down to our business. We'll start this meeting, as we do all meetings of the city council, with an invocation. It is now my honor to introduce DeeDee Yazzy Divine and Yvonne Fortier from the Native American Connections who will offer this morning's invocation. Please rise.
I wasn't nervous until the mayor started listing all the dignitaries that were here. Because you can't see from behind there. On behalf of Native American Connections and the Native American community, Yvonne and I are honored to welcome and offer a traditional blessing for the new and returning council members of the City of Phoenix City Council. Only blocks from here on Second Avenue, the city of Phoenix has historical markers acknowledging the significance of the extensive canal system of the ancient Ho'ohokam people, who in 600 AD began irrigating and bringing life to the valley. And only a few miles from here on Indian School in Central, City of Phoenix residents enjoy one of the largest urban parks in the country, which was the original home of the U.S. Industrial Indian School, founded in 1891. It later became the Phoenix Indian High School, operating for 99 years before closing in 1990. We live in the indigenous lands of the Akmial Odam people, and to state the obvious, the city of Phoenix is neighbors with the Gila River Indian Community, initiating some challenges, but more importantly, creating unlimited future opportunities. Native American Connections operates 18 service sites, supporting thousands of residents living predominantly in District 4 and 8 of the newly elected council members Laura Pastor and Kate Gallego, and also in District 7 of Councilman Michael Nowakowski. There are over 110,000 Native American people living in Phoenix metropolitan area, and we ask that you ensure the inclusion of all voices, and we pray for the wisdom of your decisions in the coming year. And at this time, Yvonne Fortier will offer a traditional Native American blessing.
Thank you, and good morning. Good morning to all of you. What a beautiful day this is. I'm going to take just a moment to remember and to acknowledge all of my relations, my ancestors, my homelands in southern Arizona. Thank you. And we're just going to use a little bit of this cedar and a little feather today that will help us to take these prayers and these words of expression, these expressions that we carry, carry those up to the Creator like that today. So this morning, we'll start in that east direction, but before I start, I just want to offer a little thought here to my Creator, our Creator. Creator God, all those ways that we've come to know you, Bendito Dios. We give you thanks for this beautiful day. We give you thanks for this new day, new day, new year, a new way of looking at things, perhaps with our new city council, the face of our new city council. We ask blessings and guidance for those newly elected, those re-elected council members, and for those that are returning, for the mayor, for the vice mayor. Thank you, Grandfather, Creator God, for bringing us here in ceremony and prayer once again like this. We really thank you for that and for this blessing of this new day. And we begin in this east direction, this place where the sun rises, and we begin in that east direction and ask that you bless the council members, all of the council, in this new direction, for their new beginnings with new ideas, innovations like that, Grandfather, Creator God. Creator God, in this south direction, Grandfather, Creator God, that direction of relationships, of harvest, we ask your blessings and your prayer and your guidance on the council members that they might establish relationships, those relationships that are so important to their constituents, those people that they serve, Grandfather, Creator God. And Grandfather, Creator God, we ask blessings from that west direction, that direction where the sun sets, Grandfather, Creator God, that direction of dreams, we ask that you help them and guide them in receptivity and intuition like that, you know, Grandfather, Creator God, in this way that we ask you. Grandfather, Creator God, in this north direction, we face, we ask that you help those council members from this direction, this direction of wisdom that our elders have brought us, this direction of the winds like that, that north wind like that, you know, Grandfather, Creator God. We ask your blessings in that way. And to Father Sky, Grandfather, Creator God, we ask for the infinite possibilities that this new year creates for this council, Grandfather, Creator God. To Mother Earth, we ask and pray, Grandfather, Creator God, that you give them mind, body, and spirit, all that they need to help to protect this Mother Earth for generations to come. And for all of us, for all those of you, that we might have the knowledge and the guidance and the understanding to support this council in this new term, to all my relations.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for the posting of the colors by the Phoenix Police Fire and Honor Guard. Following the posting of the colors, Joseph Chandler from South Mountain High School will sing the National Anthem. Then, Councilman DeCecio's children, Anna and Amelia, as well as Councilwoman Pastor's children, Sofia and Eduardo, as well as her nephew Francisco, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing through those events. Please post the colors.
I bow. Forward. Hup! 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 I bow. Forward.[1286.72]
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
Office of council member.
Office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Now I'd like to invite newly elected District Four Councilwoman Laura Pastor, her husband, Henry Coto, children Sofia and Eduardo, and nephew Francisco, to come forward for the oath of office.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Laura Pastor.
I, Laura Pastor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
The office of council member.
The office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to invite District Six Councilman Sal DeCiccio, his wife Debbie, and twin daughters Anna and Amelia to come forward for the oath of office.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Sal DeCiccio.
I, Sal DeCiccio.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And I will defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
The office of council member.
The office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Now I'd like to invite Councilwoman Kate Gallego, her husband, State Representative Ruben Gallego, and her parents, James Widlin and Julie Nierkin, to come forward for the oath of office.
Good morning. Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Kate Gallego.
I, Kate Gallego.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
The office of council member.
The office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you Judge Song-Ong for helping us with today's swearing in, and again, congratulations to all four members of the City Council being sworn in today. At this time, I would like to ask District Two Councilman Jim Waring if you'd like to share some thoughts from the podium. Councilman Waring.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it very much, and thank you to the citizens of District Two. Some of you I know are here today, but for any of those watching at home, I really appreciate this high honor. I can't think of a higher honor than to be elected by your peers to represent them on a body such as this with such fine people. So I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve again. I've been on the council for two years, and I'm looking forward to another four years on the council, which we can get a lot of things done and benefit the city of Phoenix. First, I'd like to say, though, I think there were a couple elected officials who are here as my guests who did not get introduced by the mayor. I believe we have somewhere in the audience Judge Clancy Jane. Didn't see Clancy earlier, but he usually likes to come to events, so if he's here, please rise. We have Kevin Knight and Kelly Roberson from Congressman David Schweikert's office. Congressman Schweikert represents the entirety of District Two, and we are proud to have him as our representative, and appreciate very much him sending his staff today to represent him as he's busy with other duties. And we have a former member of the Cave Creek School Board. Cave Creek School Board covers some of District Two, Mark Warren, and I appreciate very much Mark Warren being here today. I always respect anybody who is willing to engage in any thankless task like running for office, but the people on school boards and homeowners associations are completely out of their minds as opposed to us, who at least get some small compensation for our efforts. So I appreciate very much your willingness to serve. Thank you. There are just a couple thoughts I had as we move into a new year. I think in the first two years I was on the council, I thought we moved the city in the right direction. Big part of the reason I ran was I had concerns about what I saw as spending at the city. Certainly, everybody knew about the budget deficit that was still ongoing just two short years ago, and I think we've made some really positive changes. Not all the changes went as far as I personally would have liked, but I'm glad to see that the council is moving in a direction which I consider appropriate, given our times. You know, thanks to Councilman Bill Gates, who is a longtime friend. I've known Bill for many years, long before either of us were really actively involved in politics, so it's a thrill to serve with him, but it's an even greater thrill to see all his work on efficiency paying off. We've saved almost $100 million on our day-to-day operations. Most of it is due to his work, but I appreciate having a chance to have some small part in that, and I just want to publicly thank him for all his efforts. Certainly, streamlining government operations, if you were a business and you're doing business with the city of Phoenix, I think many, certainly small business owners, would tell you it was extremely difficult to navigate the bureaucracy, thanks to the work of Sal DeCiccio and former Councilman Tom Simplot. I think streamlining has become a major focus here in Phoenix, and we are making ourselves one of, if not the most, business-friendly cities in the country, certainly among major cities, and that is something that warrants a thank you from me, but also I think it's something that warrants a thank you from citizens, because I think that benefits all of us. So that's something we've worked on in the last couple of years, and I want to thank Mayor Stanton for his efforts on Mayo. Mayo Clinic is in our district. There's obviously, always with Phoenix, there's a lot of emphasis on downtown and a lot of the facilities far away from our District Two, and we're very happy and very proud to have the Mayo Clinic in our district. Really appreciate the efforts that Mayor Stanton has taken to bring ASU, the State Land Department, and other groups in the private sector together to make that a real jewel, not just of District Two, of course, but a benefit to all of us here in Phoenix. It's something that will benefit my family, my children going forward, and I really appreciate the mayor's efforts on that. Thank you. Now, I have had some frustrations. I thought we could have done more, for example, on the food tax. I didn't see any reason we couldn't eliminate the entire food tax during our first two years. Was proud to vote to get rid of half of it, starting this January 1st, but that was a source of frustration. I thought we could do better. I also thought we could do more on the pension issue, both at the ballot and amongst the council. Perhaps with this new council, we can readdress this issue, but as you've seen with other cities and the recent drop in our own credit rating, we frankly spent a lot of time behind closed doors making fun of Philadelphia, and according to news reports in the Arizona Republic, they're actually closing the gap on us, and that's not what we want to see. We have to take our responsibilities seriously and keep our fiscal house in order so we don't wind up like other cities that you've seen. We certainly don't want to be on the cover of Time Magazine like Detroit and other cities that have really fiscally imploded, and in large part because they didn't address this issue, and it's something that I hope we will address going forward. It has been suggested at council meetings that I always vote no, and I'm here to tell you that that's not actually the case. Slightly overstated. I did appreciate the people who said that, said that I was consistent, so at least I have that going for me, which is nice, I guess. However, I do get a little frustrated sometimes with our priorities. There is a method, believe it or not, to the madness. When I vote no, there is usually what I see as a compelling reason, what I believe as I go out and talk to residents. I'm representing them in the fashion that they would hope. So I am happy we're focusing more on domestic violence, and again, we have council members to thank for that. Sal DeCiccio, Thelda Williams, and Michael Noakowski brought this to the fore. I can tell you, it's an issue I had worked on in a previous life in another office, and many of you probably don't know, we lose over 100 citizens a year, many of them children, statewide because of domestic violence. It's a horrible issue, and I'm very happy that we're now spending $200,000 a year in our budget to address this issue. But $200,000 a year, when I believe in the last fiscal year, we lost 139 to domestic violence, again, statewide, in a year where we're going to spend, we're going to lose on our golf course operations, including paying off our debts, between $6 and $7 million? I have raised this objection before, $6 or $7 million for golf versus $200,000 for domestic violence. We need to reverse those numbers. Life and death issues should be something that we should focus on here, and I hope that's something that we do going forward, but I certainly appreciate the efforts of this council to at least starting this discussion as we move forwards. I also appreciate Mayor Stanton appointing me as the Chair of the city's Human Trafficking Task Force. Cindy McCain and County Attorney Bill Montgomery have done much to promote this issue. Frankly, it was not one that I had been involved in before, and I'm embarrassed to say that once I heard just the disgusting nature of these crimes. It's getting more attention now because the Super Bowl is coming here. Amazingly, to me, people, apparently people of means, people who, you know, really should know better in all walks of life, it cuts across socioeconomic status, are coming here and will engage in abhorrent practices with young people, and that is absolutely not acceptable. So again, next year, I would hope, and we're off to a good start, I think, we'll have our first meeting here in a couple of weeks, that's something we should focus on. That is a life-or-death issue. Sometimes I think we get bogged down on issues that frankly aren't as important or can be termed amenities or entertainment. This is not an amenity. This is not entertainment. This is real life. It's affecting real people, and if nothing else, we should do everything we can to protect our kids. So again, thank you, Mayor Stanton, for putting so much focus on this. Again, appreciate Cindy McCain and Bill Montgomery working on it on their end on legislation. We're definitely going to do everything we can to let our visitors know, not just for the Super Bowl, but just in general. If you're here for a golf tournament, or this is, again, if you're just here in the regular walk of life, this is not acceptable. We don't want you doing it someplace else either, but it is not acceptable here in Arizona or in Phoenix, and we mean it, and we're going to make sure that message sticks before the big game. We're very happy to have Kate Gallego and Laura Pastor Jonas join us. I've known Kate for many years, and I know she'll be a fine public servant. Certainly, her husband has had a chance to probably influence that in some small way, but in her own right, she is a brilliant person who I'm sure will do extremely well. And Laura Pastor, who I had not really known before, and we had a nice conversation here a couple of weeks ago, and if nothing else, we seemed to sort of get the joke. So we sort of had a few moments to sort of chortle about our situations. I expect that we probably will not agree on every issue, but I will be proud to serve with them. I believe we can do much to move the city forward, and again, as I said earlier, I appreciate anybody's willingness to put their name on a sign and get out there and campaign, no matter their party. Usually, almost in every case, I've found the heart's in the right place. They're trying to get out there and work for the betterment of their fellow citizens. Speaking of fellow citizens, there is some people you probably noticed were absent earlier. I was very happy to come here today and see all you chipper happy people, because I left a house full of sickies at home. I've got three-year-old twins, and I won't run you through the gamut of their illnesses in the last couple of weeks, but I wish I had taken my friends, I'm an older father, so most of my friends had given me cautionary tales about, you know, when they go to school, you're going to get sick. I thought I had knocked on thousands of doors, met tens of thousands of people over the years. I thought, sick? I never get sick. Somebody commented on that earlier. You're never sick? Well, as you can hear in my voice, I'm still a little sick, but boy, oh, boy, they went to school, and we all got sick multiple times. So I'm sorry to say that they weren't able to attend today. My wife is also sick as well. She caught it from them, but I love you guys, if you're watching at home, and James and Patrick, you need to get better. School starts on Monday, and you don't want to miss that. Kitty needs to get better just so we can all have some peace. I feel terrible. I actually weathered it a little better than they did. Finally, to my father, which you're going to laugh at this because it's literally true, of course, without him, I wouldn't be here, but without him, whatever modest achievements I have made in my life, Dad, you made it all possible, and I'm sorry, your reward was coming over for Christmas and catching the stomach flu from us. And he's a guy who really, really never gets sick, so this was sort of a big deal in the Waring household. So again, thank you for going on and on, but I'm very sorry my family couldn't be here, but I'm very, very happy and thrilled and honored to have this opportunity to serve once again, and I appreciate everybody in our group who came today, and thank you very much, and I will pass it back to the mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Waring. That was excellent. Now I'd like to invite to the podium newly elected District Four Councilwoman Laura Pastor.
I actually would like to take a moment for our police officers and also for the violence that happened in the last two days to young children, so please, let's take a moment of silence. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Councilman Tom Simplot, for your esteemed service as he travels South America at this moment. Benvenidos y buenos dias, and Happy New Year, everyone. Believe me, it's a good day to be here. What an honor it is for me to be a member of this historic Phoenix City Council. The first time in our history, we have a council that includes three Hispanics and two St. Mary's alumni. And Michael, you and I are the St. Mary's alum, and I couldn't be happier or more proud to be a member of both groups. I want to say thanks to each of you for being here and allowing me to be here with you. I also want to acknowledge and thank all the people who have stood with me. There were so many, and in my heart, you are all on this stage with me right here in this moment. As a mother and a teacher, I am inspired by the youth who take active interest in their community, who demonstrate a particular passion in helping others. And these young men and women, like my friend Joseph, who sang the National Anthem, were not just the heart of my campaign, they were the reason for my campaign. And finally, every day, I'm thankful for my family, both, but on this day, I especially want to embrace them. I want to honor my ancestors before me because they are my angels, and I also want to take this moment to honor and thank my Nana. Grandparents play a special role in a family, and she has played a special role with me. I witnessed growing up with her, her faith, her family, and her community, and Nana, I want you to know your values will continue to extend forward. To my mom and dad, who some of you know him as Congressman, but he's dad to me, both teachers are the ones who taught me the value of education and the importance of caring for others. To my husband, Henry, my children are simply everything a family should be. Henry grounds me, and coming from a blended family, Henry, Amin, Bea, Claudia, Eddie, who prefers, who mom prefers to call him Eduardo, and Sofia, they continue to sacrifice and allow me to serve our community. That being said, I want you to know that there are times when my family will come first, which I know my fellow mothers can understand, right, Nicole? I could not ask for anything more than the love I get from them every day, and I love them right back. I would like to acknowledge and thank my extended family and friends for their love and support. As Nelson Mandela said so eloquently, "Everyone can rise above their circumstances and achieve success if they are dedicated to and impassioned about what they do." I want you to know I will bring that passion to the City Council. Wherever you live, whatever you do, whoever you voted for, if you care about Phoenix, I will work with you to get things done. Public service is about opportunity for everyone, and city government is nonpartisan for a reason. There are few certainties in life, but at this one, I'm certain. Compromise is neither a bad word nor a bad thing. It simply means achieving together. Every single day, you should hold us up to a higher standard and hold our feet to the fire, and today is about you, who work hard, who raise families, volunteer in our communities, watch over the safety of our neighbors, and pay taxes. I vow to work with the mayor and council wisely, compassionately, and honorably to help ensure the future of Phoenix is worthy of its past, and the future we build for our children is worthy of them. City halls are places for people, and it's time to rededicate ourselves and to remind ourselves that it's people, not politics, that should drive and inspire us every single day. The people of Phoenix certainly inspire me. Those firefighters and those police officers inspire me every day. We have too many challenges to ignore and so many opportunities to see. When you represent the diversity of Phoenix like all of us do, we don't get to turn our backs on the tough choices that need to be made, from the day-to-day phone calls about barking dogs, broken trash containers, and the enormity of filling 300 police vacancies and lowering crime rates. We need to roll up our sleeves and get it done, all of it, for the people who expect and deserve nothing else. I will never forget who sent me here and why. District Four has always been my home and passion. I've been listening to the challenge of my neighbors for as long as I can remember and celebrating their successes for my entire life. I know what they know. District Four can show everyone what community and collaboration are all about. We can put old properties to new uses if we work together. We can attract new businesses and expand the ones that have been here all along. How? Together. We can strengthen partnerships with neighborhood leaders, enhance access to city services such as parks, libraries, senior centers, and pools. How are we going to do this? Please go with me. Together. We can lead the way on the kind of economic development that will ensure our place in a global economy. How are we going to do this? Together. We can create a city of inclusiveness, tolerance, and equality that leads the way for the entire state. Together. And we can do it because we are passionate about our city and our connection to our neighborhoods within it, about the people who call it home today and those who will make it their home in the future. It's this passion that makes progress progress. But it's only possible if community interest is first, and if we do that, we can create a vibrant, sustainable, world-class city. If we reach out to each other and work together to make every day a better than the day before, then we can continue to rise as only a Phoenix can. Look around this room. Meet the rest of your team. As a teacher, I would like you to do this for me. If you are a police officer, a firefighter, a paramedic, or a healthcare worker, please rise and stand, which includes Councilman Valenzuela. Please stand. If you're a teacher, a dreamer, or an educator, an education, please rise and stand. If you're a business owner, part of a nonprofit, or from a faith-based community, please rise and stand. If you're a server, a clerk, a laborer, or in the hospitality industry, please rise and stand. If you serve your community by coaching, helping veterans, the homeless, and counsel those in need, please rise and stand. Now, if you're a parent, a mother, and a grandparent, please rise and stand. If you are, and here we go, if you are a City of Phoenix employee, please rise. Rise, rise, rise up, for this city is we, is what we love so much. To everyone in every district, if you're not standing already, this is your time to stand. This is your time to be heard, and this is our time to put the promise of tomorrow over politics of the day. That's why I'm standing. It's why I was elected. It's why I'm here, and something tells me it's why you all are here as well. So thank you. Have a safe and healthy 2014, and remember, my doors will always be open to you. May God continue to bless us all, and may Phoenix continue to rise.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pastor. Excellent. Now I'd like to ask District Six Councilman Sal DeCiccio to share his remarks. Councilman.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for being here today. I tell you, it's a great honor to be here, and I'd be remiss by not thanking my family. You know, it's funny, when I got out the door this morning, my wife even turned to me, for those of you that know me pretty well, know that I'm not big on wearing ties. I'm pretty direct, but I'm not big on wearing ties. My wife saw me, she goes, "I didn't even have to ask you to put on a tie today, Sal." I said, "Well, no, you didn't need to today." And Michael Noakowski even hit me up on it, says, "Hey, are you really wearing a tie?" I go, "Yeah, must be a special occasion somewhere." But no, I do want to give some special thanks right off the bat if I could. You know, when you're involved in these campaigns... You know, when you're involved in these campaigns, it's always rough, it's always tough. Especially if you're taking the types of issues, some of the things that my office has been able to try to move forward at the City of Phoenix. And even though we're at the forefront, the people that are always the ones that bear the brunt of all the hard times are your family. So I, I thank God every day for my wife and my two children, and in the middle who you saw here today. Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Anna. Where are you guys anyways? All right, there you are. Thanks. And for those who, for those of you that remember it last year, my two girls were only five, but they were jumping up and down on the stage. They stole the show and it was very appropriate. I thought it was very good, actually. And, and then I do want to give special thanks also to my mother and father. They couldn't make it here today. They're a little elderly and it's very difficult sometimes getting out the door. But they, I've been very blessed in my life to have family like that. Both my parents came over from Italy. They had a struggle. I mean, for those of you that know me, we didn't have a whole lot of money when we grew up. We grew up kind of poor. My first language was Italian. And if you want to know where my persistence comes from, it really comes from my mom. Driving and driving and driving and driving to make sure that we always got ahead in life. And I, you know, I thank God for my family for everything that they've done for us. Then I also want to give special thanks here too. I mean, this is kind of exciting to be able to sit up here with Laura Pastor and Kate Gallegos and the other members of the council. But Laura's already hit the road running. I mean, boy, I'll tell you, she's already met with people. She's already figured out where her agenda is going to be going. And I got, this is going to be an exciting time on this council. And Laura, congratulations for being here today. Kate Gallego, I mean, really, I mean, think of this. The Arizona Republic points out 14 people every single year, people that are going to be notable, ones that are going to be advancing, ones that are going to be moving the city and state forward. Kate was one of the 14. Congratulations, Kate. I mean, that's like, that's really, really cool to get something like that. That's usually reserved for congressmen and senators and people like that. And for those of you that kind of were always wondering where I was going on things, you always think of it, me, as either like the food tax, property tax increases, or stopping that, or, you know, stop, you know, stopping the city from taking too much out of your pocket, working on domestic violence, working on making the city the best place in the country to do business. But it's more than that. It's always been more than that. It's literally about putting a plan in place that makes the City of Phoenix the most sustainable and viable place in the country that allows us to compete on a national, international level, making us smarter, better, faster than our competitors because we're going to need those things in order to be able to compete in this new world economy. And so in order to do that, I need to walk you through just a little bit of history of why things were so difficult and why things were so hard at the very beginning. But they're starting to work through. And we've had, as taxpayers, incredible successes. But before I get into the successes, I need to walk us through the history of what occurred. And if you take a look, you go back in 2000 to 2009, that was the era of big government. We saw the City of Phoenix raised water rates and sewer rates combined about 89%. Big government created big problems when there was a hiccup in the economy. Now, I don't blame my predecessors. I don't do that. The idea then is, where are you going to go from there? Once you created that structure, you created a cultural change, you had to come back and change that culture. And to do that, when you've got momentum heading in one direction of 15,000 employees and an entire organization of $3.4 billion, to change the culture takes time and it takes effort. And sometimes you have to kind of push a little harder than you'd normally do if you would in real life. I love my colleagues. I love everybody at the City of Phoenix. I think we've got phenomenal employees. But pushing doesn't mean it's a bad thing. So if you look at what occurred from 2000, 2009, we had to enter into an era of what? Big decisions. Mayor Gordon, others on the council, everybody worked hard and these were the big decision points. Matter of fact, when I was put on the council and I won the election, a lot of people asked me, they said, are you sure you really want to go do this? Because normally, these end political careers. They're not the positions you want to be in. But a city needs to have a direction. I, I felt, and I'm an optimist like you would never believe, I'm the most optimistic guy you'll ever find, that we could make these changes. The first two years definitely were hard. From 2009 to 2011, it was very difficult. We had some difficult things that started to occur in the City of Phoenix. But to change the direction, to change the culture, move us off this path that wasn't quite financially stable, but to move us onto financially stable, stable path that allowed us to prosper and grow and improve our quality of life in the City of Phoenix. So in 2011, the first big breakthrough occurred because it was like literally every time we were doing something, we got stopped. It was like playing in a football game. Every time I tried to run the ball, boom, you got stopped there. Pass got stopped there. In 2011, I believe it was in March of 2011, was the first breakthrough. The City of Phoenix, for the first time that I can remember, had no increase in their sewer rates. Now, you think that that's a kind of a small thing. It was big back then. It was huge. It was a big move. But then it got bigger. Working with, with Mayor Gordon, we ended up looking at trying to make the City of Phoenix the best place in the country to do business. Then the plan that Councilman Waring was just talking about was started then. Then you saw in the elections, the reform packages that I was talking about and others were talking about wanting to get the City of Phoenix to move forward on, were the highlight of the mayoral race. Now, that was pretty cool on its own. But it created the momentum to move forward. Then the big game-changing moment occurred. And it's no slight on Brian or anyone else, but the real game-changing moment occurred when Councilman Jim Waring got put on the council. Because that is when the moment started to happen. That's when, if you were to look at a football game and say, wow, now you could see where the team was going. You could see where the, the gap was going to be and where the individuals that were always constantly trying to block you, you were able to forecast three, four, five, and six moves ahead of where they were and be able to get those reforms. That's why the reform packages that we were looking at, before I talk about the reform package, I want to talk to you about how hard it was to get here because it was very difficult. But the game-changing moment was when he was put on the council. Now we saw the field. We were able to score and taxpayers scored big. And let me walk you through that. And we had in place a plan, a four-pillar plan, call it what you want, four strategies. But there are four parts of the plan that we had to get through. One, we talked about it earlier, was changing the culture of City Hall. How do you do that? You've got to make us operate like what? Your homes, your households. Government, remember from our economics classes, is inelastic. Where price and cost doesn't matter, we're a monopoly. So in order to make price and cost matter, you had to do what? Keep the taxpayers out of it, quit taking money out of their pockets and create efficiencies and productivity internally. So in order to do that, you look at Councilwoman Thelda Williams, Michael Noakowski, Bill Gates, and Jim Waring in particular, we have now, three years in a row, a combined water and sewer rate of zero. That is the first time in the history of the City of Phoenix that that has occurred. That's not occurred. Matter of fact, most people can't remember the last time that we haven't had an increase in that. The food tax, that pesky food tax that everyone talks about. Year after year, we were told it could not be done, could not be done. You kept seeing these budgets about it not being able to get done. It wasn't until the breakthrough came in with Councilman Noakowski and Councilwoman Thelda Williams were able to put together the plan in place that allowed it to happen where no cuts had to be made. Then you look at fee increases. Knowing fee increases in the last three years in the City of Phoenix. Property taxes, there was a huge push, Councilman Gates, remember that? In order to raise the property tax rate, Councilman Gates, working with Councilman Gates, we stopped the property tax increase. So here's what's come out of that part of it. Remember, this is just the first of four pillars, four parts of the strategy. What occurred out of that? We have $89 million cut in government waste. We now have an employee base that is one of the most productive that we've ever had in the City of Phoenix. And we have the highest contingency fund of $43 million, more than we've ever had in the City of Phoenix. Those are the wins that the taxpayer had. But that was just part of it. At the same time, you have to restructure internally. What do you have to do? You have to make sure you set in place the foundation that allows us to grow the economy. Government, no matter what anybody says, does not create jobs. It creates an environment for jobs to be created. So in place, working with Mayor, Mayor Gordon, Tom Simplot, we were able to put in place the best model in the country for job creation. How do we do that? 24-hour permitting. You walk in today, you walk out with a permit. 24-hour inspections. You order an inspection today, you get an inspection tomorrow. One-day, five-day, and 21-day site plan approvals. The fastest in the country. If you look at just those two pillars alone, I challenge any city in the state, in the valley, in the country that has a plan as comprehensive as we do here in the City of Phoenix. But it went beyond that. The third pillar, the second pillar is growing the economy. And we had to do that by streamlining, creating efficiencies. The third pillar is to create transparency within City Hall. Working with Councilwoman Thelda Williams, congratulations, Thelda, on this, we put together in place a true zero-based budget, which meant we have the highest transparency of any city in the country. Now, we need to do more on transparency. We've got to quit making these votes or these decisions in executive session that don't get outside. And they need to be public votes on those things. But we've made and created a foundation that allows us to move forward when it comes to transparency. But it also allowed us to move forward on what else? Being the best in the nation at things that we do. From answering the phone to even creating the best model when it comes to ending domestic violence. Thanks to Councilwoman Thelda Williams, Michael Noakowski, Danny Valenzuela, and Jim Waring, we were able to put in place the best model when it comes to ending domestic violence. But these successes just don't end there. The fourth pillar, which is probably one of the most important pillars because they're all tied together. These things aren't interdependent upon, independent upon themselves. They are interdependent upon each other. And the fourth pillar was creating an environment that fixes our long-term obligations. And you heard Councilman Waring talk about it earlier. But we just haven't gone far enough to do that. The idea is to get us off the path of Detroit. We are on that same path. Detroit, remember, had a $3.6 billion unfunded pension debt. The City of Phoenix, $2.4 billion. We don't have the money to pay for it, folks. We've got to create a model to do that. That's not going to happen here at City Hall. Going to be quite blunt about that because you also know I'm pretty direct. But that is going to have to be done through an initiative process. There are probably going to be two things that are going to need to happen. One, an initiative to get us off this current model, put us on the same model that the private sector has, that is financially stable for a long term for the City of Phoenix. And then the other is we have got to start paying down that unfunded pension debt. It is not fair to our children to leave them this enormous debt. If you look at the generation before me and the generation before us and the generation probably a lot before Laura and Kate, they're pretty young. But if you look at the generation, they never left us a problem. They never left us a problem. They left us a better world. What has our generation left our children? We've left them debt. We have an obligation to fix it for our children and not have to depend on them to have to do that. So the question is, where do we go from here? And I saw former Mayor Johnson in the audience, I believe. Mayor Gordon, are you here too? They wrote a really nice, pretty letter. I don't know if you write about it in the Arizona Republic. But it talked about big ideas. Well, you can't just write something like that, can't write these nice flowery things without expecting somebody to say, maybe you ought to do something about it too. I believe that there are 10 things that we can do to move the City of Phoenix forward and create a vision of big ideas. Moving from an era of big government to the era that we are in right now of big decisions, transition out of those big decisions into an era of big ideas for the City of Phoenix. Move the city forward with big ideas. Use our former mayors. Put them on committees. Put them as head of areas in order to use those individuals. And here are some of the things that I think that we ought to be looking at and we ought to be moving forward. One, promote an education cluster downtown. If you look at what former Mayor Phil Gordon did, well, actually, former Mayor Skip Remza started the emphasis in downtown. And Phil Gordon hit it home. Brought ASU downtown. But it's more than that. Now we should be looking at private sector universities. We should be looking at other types of schools. Look with the City of Mesa, Scott, I saw you here earlier. What they've done is gone out and look at private universities to bring in. Get away from the anchor mentality that ASU's been fantastic for the downtown. I love them. But now it's time to bring in other educational facilities in the downtown area. You have, and I know it's different because I'm not part of the downtown in my district, but if you don't have a vibrant downtown, your core begins to crumble over time. You've got to maintain that vibrancy. And it was because of the vision and the things that the people did in the past that allowed this vision to occur. Create that core now, create it into a cluster. Number two, push technology. And this is the city manager, Ed Zirker, we've been talking about this. But it's outside of just creating a, and looking at an assessment we do internally, Ed, look at what we have on the outside. Don't look at just what we need as individuals or what our operations need. Look at what the community needs. Now, I know it doesn't make sense to have Wi-Fi throughout an entire city, but there could be pockets where we could assess the private sector in Wi-Fi pockets. Assemble individuals in our community from all walks of life, from the engineers that create these like neat things, I don't know what they would be called, but, but literally assemble those individuals throughout our community, leaders in technology that are able to be able to put together a plan in place of not only what we need for our assessments internally, but what the community needs to be able to improve the quality of life within our city. The third thing is improve our quality of life. You've heard, you haven't heard a whole lot in the debate, but we used to talk a lot about preserving our desert. Historic preservation became a highlight last year. We need to look at how we can preserve those assets, those things that made our city great. Focus again on desert preservation. It doesn't mean we always have to spend money to do that. You can provide incentives for people to do that through density transfers. Other ways where you encourage people to have open space, not just on desert preservation, but open space within central parts of Phoenix can be done if it's done through the zoning process. We can do that and it doesn't necessarily always have to cost money to do that. The fourth, protect the rights of the individual. Protect our taxpayers. One of the things, and it's as rudimentary as this, water rates, fee increases, property taxes, food tax, all those things matter. They matter to individuals. Keep that at bay. Quit looking to them to fund the activities. Let's look to ourselves first to create the efficiencies internally by growing the economy and at the same time, which will bring in more revenue, long-term and short-term, but quit looking to the taxpayer for more money. Sixth, and Councilman Waring just talked about that, this city needs to be focused on helping those who cannot help themselves. We put together a plan in place, thanks to Councilman Williams, Michael Noakowski, Danny Valenzuela, Jim Waring, and Councilman Johnson, that made the city the best place in the country to do bus, excuse me, the best place in the country for domestic violence, ending domestic violence. Councilman Jim Waring now is heading up a committee on sex trafficking. Now, for those of us that aren't as familiar at that, you've got 12 and 14-year-old kids enslaved. Enslaved and used for sex. That is wrong. Not in my city, not in my town, not in my state, and not with our children. That is what the motto needs to be for the City of Phoenix. It's not just about putting in place a plan for just the Super Bowl. Councilman Waring is now working on a plan, long-term, to make the City of Phoenix the best place in the country when it comes to sex trafficking. And we'll be looking at places like Houston to find out what they've done. Mayor Stanton's worked on homelessness. Homelessness. He will put in place a plan, I believe this year, that will make the City of Phoenix the best in the country when it comes to dealing with homelessness. We already, we already were able to save 56 individuals off the street. There are still thousands more that need our help. They need our assistance because they don't have that. That is what the City of Phoenix needs to focus on. And seven, and I'm almost done with this, but there's a lot that needs to be done here at the city. And for those of you that know, I fill my plate. It's bolster international trade. The City of Phoenix, and one of the things that Mayor Stanton wanted to push through was getting the City of Phoenix to have a true trade office. Not a consultant, but a true trade office in the state, in the country of Mexico. That is what we need. If we believe that our southern border, our southern trade is important to the City of Phoenix, then you know what? We better be committing resources to making that happen. But not just working to government, government, working with the private sector to increase foreign direct investments in the City of Phoenix. Number eight, make our citizens the number one priority. We're going to be facing another budget situation in the City of Phoenix where we're going to have at least $40 million, if not $70 million more in revenue. In the past, In the past, the government employees, the government unions basically took all the money. The question now is where is that money going to go? Is it going to go to improving our roads? Is it going to go to improving our homeless situation, domestic violence, putting more police officers on the street, putting more firefighters on the street? Or is it going to be going to what I believe the insiders at City Hall? I believe you deserve to be the number one priority. You, the public, needs to be the number one priority. Number nine, limit government to the areas where there are real problems, limited government. Don't pass laws that impact so many people when in fact the focus is so narrow. We've seen this a couple times at the city of Phoenix where things could have been handled, but instead we passed laws, the city has basically passed laws that criminalize business activity, doing normal day-to-day business. That's not acceptable. That's not the city that I like. That's not the city that I live in, and it's not the city that I adore so much. And finally, this is it, and you all know me really well, but the idea is, and you always know that I keep my promise. When you look at my children, they will tell you, if I said, hey, look, does daddy say, does daddy say something, does daddy do it? They'll say, yes, he always does what he says. Likewise, the city of Phoenix made a commitment when the voters passed a bond issue several years ago. They wanted us to commit those dollars to those bonds. The city of Phoenix called it a deferment, but basically it was a cut of over $150 million to $200 million. Cut those citizen bond-approved projects because it was taking the money from those projects and using it for other things. That is not the city that I live in. That is not the city that I want to see to be able to move the city of Phoenix forward. Bring us back to protecting the rights of those taxpayers that voted for those bonds. Put the bond program back in place, even if it means that it has to be done slowly, but start putting it back in place. And then I'll end with this. I appreciate everything, and I appreciate my colleagues. They do a fantastic job. But when I go into working with you, and they all know this, I don't represent them. I love them. I love our employees. I love the mayor. You know, may not think I do, but I do like them, okay? But I do like them. There's no one I don't like, pretty much. Well, maybe one or two. Those pesky union guys that were putting my wife on TV, didn't like that too much. But, but, but the bottom line is this, is that when I go into a room, I represent the taxpayer. I represent you. I don't represent anyone else. I represent you. I will continue that commitment that I made to you in 2009, and I will continue the commitment on real reform. And none of these things were done by one person. They were done because we worked it as a team. All these accomplishments that I listed were done because we worked as a team. Thank you very much. God bless.
And next up, the final speaker for this morning's inauguration is newly-elected District Eight Councilwoman Kate Gallego. Councilwoman.
Each new hour holds new chances for new beginnings, wrote the poet and civil rights leader Maya Angelou in her famous poem, "On the Pulse of Morning." That captures how I feel today as we start a new year, as we swear in a new council, and as we celebrate our strong history in the city of Phoenix. We can build on that strong history and take pride in all our predecessors have accomplished. As our economy continues to recover and we look optimistically to the future, we must make long-term strategic plans and investments that ensure sustainable growth and prosperity. These plans should focus on issues I want to discuss today: economic development, sustainability, transportation, and public safety. Our plans should harness our diversity and our experience, maintain our unique culture, while providing the structural integrity to grow. Great companies won't come here. We have to go out and seek them. We need to support our entrepreneurs, including District Eight's own incubators and co-working facilities. We need to invest in attracting corporate headquarters, research and design facilities, and businesses where we have strategic advantages, such as mission-critical infrastructure and personalized medicine. We need to build on the successes that we've discussed earlier today, like our partnerships with Mexico, and expand those to areas from South America to partners in Asia such as Israel. And who in the audience would be excited about more direct international flights to places such as Japan? I would also like to invest in manufacturing and sustainable technology. We already have a workforce that can deliver in those areas. In my district, for example, we have iron workers and sheet workers, sheet metal workers, plumbers and pipe fitters represented by groups I see in the audience today, such as Local 469. These jobs pay well and provide great benefits. The employees can truly raise successful families. And building on a great economy for all of our Phoenix employees will require collaboration from business leaders, from economic developers, and the groups that represent hard-working Phoenicians, such as UFCW and Unite Here. We cannot build a great international city without our city employees, including our friends at Ashby, our public safety employees, who certainly have been reminding us how often they put their lives on the line. Thank you to all of you. We have to think long-term as we build this great future and invest in education. As an MBA with a background in science, I'd like to see the city emphasize STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, in our programs targeted at youth, whether they be at city libraries or at Phoenix after-school centers. Let's get Phoenix moving full steam ahead. My science background also spurs my belief in sustainability. I am committed to helping make Phoenix the world's most sustainable desert city. When I chaired the Environmental Quality Commission and the Solar Energy Subcommittee, I learned many ways to make that happen. Where we now see vacant land in our urban core, I hope we'll see transit-oriented development along light rail. Where we now see an undesirable landfill, in the future, we will see raw materials for innovative companies. In fact, one day, I hope my colleagues will even be jealous that we have all the best landfills in South Phoenix. If you can't see their faces, they're not jealous yet. One of our biggest challenges to a chaining sustainability is in transportation. I learned that firsthand when a recent medical issue kept me out of the driver's seat. We have a long way to go to make sure we have a good, working public transportation system. Many parts of my district don't have good bus service, light rail doesn't go to South Phoenix, so let's get to work and make that change. While some of these solutions will take years, we can move quickly to make Phoenix a more bikeable and walkable city. Wouldn't it be great if when I finish my time on the council, you can bike from one end of Phoenix to the other in a safe, shaded bicycle trail? With our great weather and open streets, we should be leading in sustainable, accessible transportation. We'll have to do it in gradual steps, and one of the places I propose starting is creating better transportation options for our veterans. We have a... We've done a great job in Phoenix addressing homelessness for our veterans, making sure they have a safe bed to sleep in. And now the next step is making sure that those who are able to work are able to get to job, get to jobs. Many of our veterans in transition right now don't own cars. And I've had the wonderful opportunity alongside my husband, who served in the Iraq War, of working with many of the great veterans organizations in District Eight, led by veterans themselves, the Madison Street Veterans Association, U.S. Vets, and Cloud Break Communities. And as I've spoken to the leaders of these groups, such as Terry Aireman, he says, we have spent so much time trying to find people jobs nearby because so many of them struggle to get to work. So we can't solve all of those problems, but let's make it a little bit easier by finding a way to offer free or reduced transportation to all of our veterans, starting with those who need it most. Another area our strategic plan must consider is the status of women in Phoenix. I am honored to be the first woman ever to represent District Eight on the Phoenix And to serve with two great women, we are really gonna be able to accomplish a lot. But there are women who are still struggling. So today, I propose we conduct a study of the status of women in Phoenix. I think it will reveal great successes, such as the large number of women who own businesses and who serve on boards and commissions. But there's still plenty of women who are struggling, and we need to make sure we understand the reality about wages, about childcare, even homelessness. They told us in business school that what matters is what gets measured, so it's time to start measuring. And if this area is successful, we can expand those studies to other areas. So these are just a few of the groups that strategic plans should take into consideration. But I want to represent all of District Eight, from beautiful South Mountain to vibrant downtown Phoenix, from the aerospace companies near the airport to the farmers of Levine. I hope to represent people of all races, ethnicities, national origins, genders, and sexual orientations. Our diversity is one of our greatest strengths. We can build upon such diversity to make sure all residents feel welcome. District Eight is home to many undocumented immigrants who are struggling to create a better world for their families, including young people who came to the USA early in their lives, students who are called Dreamers. For the first time in Phoenix's history, and maybe the first time anywhere in the country, the majority of the staff on my city council office will be Dreamers. I'm very lucky to have these individuals on my team. While they haven't always been able to pursue the educational or military service options that they wanted, their commitment to the city of Phoenix and to all of the people in this room is unparalleled. They inspire me with their courage and hard work. So while we wait for the federal government to fix a broken immigration policy, this city can lead the way in making sure people feel safe in their homes and are comfortable reporting crimes, which will make all of us safer. I am excited about the potential ahead, the many areas the city council can work together on, from economic development to having more police officers on the street and investing in our transportation infrastructure. There will be issues on which we disagree, but I promise to search for bipartisan consensus. Let me close by recognizing a wonderful group of people. My parents, to whom I owe my commitment to public service. My husband and his mother, my great team. And the people of District Eight, thank you for getting me where I am today. I plan to make you proud. I also look forward to working with the mayor and my fellow members of the city council and our strong and loyal city employees. And now, in the pulse of this new morning, let's work together to seize these new opportunities. Thank you.
Congratulations to each member of the council who was sworn in today, and thank you to each and every person here today for celebrating this occasion. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but we are all in this together. The council, the talented and dedicated workforce of 14,000 city employees, and each and every citizen of the city of Phoenix. By working together, I know we can continue to accomplish great things for our city and our future. We just have a couple more things and we'll end today's ceremony, but we do want to continue to acknowledge dedicated public servants who are with us here today. We do appreciate their presence and their partnership. From the Central Arizona Water Conservation District, Board Member Heather McRey is here. Heather, thank you for working with us on water issues. We treasure our partnerships with the tribal communities surrounding our valley. From the Gila River Indian Community, Councilwoman Monica Anton is here. Councilwoman, thank you for taking the time to be here and showing partnership. And representing our friend, Representative Kirsten Sinema, two professionals from her office, Kendra Levy and Dana Marie Kennedy. Thank you both for being here. We will close by having a benediction, and then we're gonna hear from a wonderful quartet from Horizon High School. So it's my privilege to call upon Rabbi John Linder to deliver today's benediction, then we'll hear from the quartet, and then our ceremony will be done. Rabbi.
Let's rise together. God of all peoples, God who gives breath to our mariachi players, God who inspires the Native American cedar blessing, God who creates each of us in the divine image, be with us today. Be with us and hear our prayers for the Phoenix police officer and citizen shot on Tuesday afternoon in the line of service to protect us. Be with us as we count our blessings for the privilege to be citizens of this great country, this great state of Arizona, and our great city of Phoenix. May our Valley of the Sun be known for far more than the sunshine overhead, but the light that emanates from our leadership. A light that projects insight, respecting divergent views, identifying common goals. The light of democracy where the poor and the wealthy, the powerless and those wielding power, those in the center and those on the margins, can come together and deliberate for the common good, a light that unites. Please, God, be with Mayor Stanton and First Lady Nicole Stanton, our Phoenix city counselors, our acting city manager, the judiciary, their families and staffs, serving our city by creating policies, supporting services, solving problems, ensuring justice while preserving the dignity of all of our brothers and sisters. Let us celebrate the strength and diversity of our city. This morning, represented demographically and through the commitment of each council person, honoring the needs of all our residents. To our newly-elected councilwomen, Laura Pastor and Kate Gallego, bringing with them the richness of their respective Hispanic and Jewish roots, joined in oath by re-elected councilmen Waring and DeCicio, along with city councilmembers Williams, Gates, Valenzuela, Noakowski, and Mayor Stanton. May you always value the city of our 14, the service of our 14,000 city employees, together with our business and civic leaders. May you work to secure the rights of all our citizens and those striving to be citizens. And may you always hear the voice of the grassroots, those that put their faith in you. God who makes peace in the high heavens, our task before us is clear. May we, with our elected officials, walking hand in hand with the common man, woman, and child of every race, religion, and nationality, may we find the strength and wisdom to be your messengers of peace and justice on earth, as we say together, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Rabbi. Before we hear from the Horizon High School quartet, this is an official meeting of the city council. We began with a quorum. That quorum was of the former council. Now we have to make it official and have a quorum call of the new city council. Mr. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman DeCicio. Councilwoman Gallego. Councilwoman Noakowski. Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Valenzuela. Councilwoman Waring. Councilwoman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gates.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
Here. Let's give them a big round of applause. Our new and returning city council. And now it is my pleasure to bring to the stage the Horizon High School Quartet for
It's easy if you try. No hell below us. Above us only sky. Imagine all the people living for today. Imagine there's no countries. It isn't hard to do. Nothing to kill or die for. And no religion too. Imagine all the people living life in peace. You may say I'm a dreamer, but I'm not the only one. I hope someday you'll join us. And the world will live as one. Imagine no possessions. I wonder if you can. Need more. A brotherhood of mine. Imagine all the people sharing all the world. You may say I'm a dreamer, but I'm not the only one. I hope someday you will join us.
Join us.
What a way to end our ceremony. They've got talent in the district, too, Councilman. Thank you, Eli Jordan, Alex, and Adam. A great way to end today's inauguration. The ceremony is now complete. We're going to have a reception in the City Hall atrium, so you can greet our new and returning council members. Have a great 2014.
You've been watching the Phoenix City Council inauguration ceremony for 2014. For replay information, visit online at phoenix.gov/11.